All right, so I guess if everybody's good, it's day 801. So if it's all right, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, October 8th. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good morning, everybody. Good morning. All right, so in terms of first election updates, really just want to highlight, I think some people might have seen the article in the paper this weekend about the changes at the transfer station. This was what our board had discussed in June. The target date had been to have it implemented starting in November and a little press release got out a little late from the town side. That was, I think, just a miscommunication between us and Guilford. But a lot of information now on our website about that. And this is basically that the transfer station is going to pay as you throw. So you pay for your bag and you have a specific bag that you buy. They are going to be available at Stop &amp; Shop and Roberts, as well as Rings End, is what I'm being told. But nothing's been totally firmed up yet. So hopefully in the next week, we'll have all that information online. Want to highlight to the community, if you have private hauler service and you don't take your weekly trash to the transfer station, this doesn't apply to you. So it doesn't impact your service at all. It's only for those who bring their trash to the transfer station. It does not include recyclables. So if you take a lot of your recyclables to the transfer station, that's still free. The goal is to get as many recyclables out of your trash as well as food waste, because that will significantly reduce the number of bags that you use on a weekly basis. I know my family, when we did that food waste diversion pilot program, we really had maybe one or two bags of true trash every week. And that's for a family of four, including two kids. So I was quite surprised. Sometimes we only had one bag because we really were good about sorting and taking the food scraps out as well. So if you want to minimize the number of bags you use, food scraps are free and so is recycling, other recycled materials. So just want to bring that to your attention. We'll continue to update the website. And that will be basically in December, I think, is when that's the way it's going to be operating. I'm sure it'll take a couple of months. There'll be a lot of education with the public as they go to the site. But just want to bring that to everybody's attention. And with that, any want to pass on to any liaison reports or selectman comments?
Well, I just wanted to confirm, I thought I saw that food scrap bags were maybe 20 or 30 cents in the press release.
I don't recall that, I think if you wanted to buy their bags, but that's a good question. I don't know if they're requiring for the food scrap specific bags. I know it was always compostable bags before. I don't know if that's a mandated thing. I didn't think it was going to be that way, but I'll double check that.
Okay. And then I do have one liaison report from our Affordable Housing Committee. They are in preparations to bring us their first recommendation. They've been discussing affordable housing trust funds. So I think date is yet to be determined on when they will present at one of our meetings. But Peggy, they should be reaching out to you fairly soon to get something on the books. Right?
I know you're a part of that committee, or at least our liaison. But do you know anything about the new Hope Partnership project? Are we able to go get a tour of that and kind of peek it? I think that individual that was at our meeting the last time mentioned something about that, but it would be interesting to go see it.
Yeah, there's actually an event being held. I think it's later in October.
Like a ribbon cutting or something?
Yes, it's not this Monday upcoming. I believe it's the Monday following.
Let me just look, I've got, and I thought something was sent out to all, yes, it's 11 o'clock on the 28th. So and all board members are welcome. I think an email went out. If not, I'll make sure that, you know, you guys all get a meeting invite for that. So.
Yes, we did receive the invite.
Yeah, okay, great. So that's really the, you know, opportunity. Hopefully we can see, you know, what one of the units look like. And I don't think people are moving in until like December or might be, I don't know when their, the actual move in date is, but it's, you know, pretty much close to that. So.
I have, I have two things. The first one is really more of a citizen facing question, maybe for Peggy, if you can help. There are a lot of, it's a lot of paint on the roads in Madison these days. And there have been mailbox hangers from a contractor saying they're going to begin digging up our yards to lay fiber optic cable for Frontier. They invite us to call them if we've got dog fences or sprinkler systems buried underground so that they know about it. However, when you call them, nobody answers. And when you leave a message, nobody calls you back. So the question, as a resident who's got both a buried dog fence and a sprinkler system, how do we get a hold of these people to find out when they're going to start doing this and what they're going to start doing?
Yeah, they, we've got, this came in a bunch of calls on Monday. I guess they just started doing this over the last week. They do a, they notify the Public Works when they're going to be doing this because they have to mark things for utilities. And we're trying to track down a number too, because we've tried the number ourselves. So we know that it's going to nowhere or no one's picking up. We have some contacts from a year ago. If you recall, we put out in, I think it was April of 2023, noticed that fiber optic was coming. You know, so we had a whole presentation and they talked about how they're going to manage this well and all this stuff. So yesterday we were reaching out to that contact at Frontier. So once we know more, you know, I will put something out publicly so that people are aware of that. Because we did get a number of calls about that.
So could you then make a plan to put it in your weekly updates as well when they're going to begin? And maybe even the neighborhoods as they, if and when they publish your schedule?
I don't know if they'll do a schedule. I mean, you know, yes, I'll try to get as much information as I can. Because some neighborhoods you need stuff buried, some you don't. You know, what they did over the last year was put those cables up, right? We saw them going throughout the neighborhoods. And I guess now this is actually, in some neighborhoods where you can do this, they're doing it underground to the houses. Like my house has an above ground link, you know, for cable. I don't have a buried cable wire. But whatever we can find out, we'll certainly tell people. Because we, mostly the building department and then Public Works have gotten a lot of calls about it. So you're spot on.
Well, that would be awesome. Thank you. The second thing I wanted to talk about was an article in the source recently that was concerning the library and their rather massive shortfall in operating funds. And I did a little research because it struck me as odd and it struck me as the number's not working. In the current fiscal year, the town has pledged approximately $1.55 million to the library in operating funds. Doesn't include the mortgage payments we make for them or any other long-term capital funding. This is just simply their year in and year out operations expenses. And that was almost a 4% increase from the prior year. And well in line with what we did within the town for increases. So I think they were treated, you know, rather fairly in that increase and consistently with the other things that we did. I also looked at the other private public partners that we have in town, the ambulance and the two fire departments. And the library receives more than any of those three other groups. And almost more than all three of those groups together. Said differently, of the four groups, the library receives almost half of the public money that we set aside for these groups. So the notion that the town isn't taking the library seriously or doing its best to fully support the library, I take issue with because I think we, we do, when they're getting almost as much as all of our public safety services, I think that they're getting their fair share at the very least. The other thing that bothered me was their shortfall. And I went back to their budget and they forecasted about $340,000 in funds from fundraising, grants, other outside non-town sources. And their shortfall is bigger than that 340,000. So I have to ask, how has the library become so poorly mismanaged that with all, with 100% of the town funding that was pledged, that they're, they find themselves so far underwater? And I think we need to have some sort of accounting for this. And.
Bruce, not to interrupt you, but I did, obviously you and I have spoken and, and I ended up talking to the, as the liaison for library, I talked to the chair of the Library Board of Trustees. And they were going to look into it. They understood. My sense was that that article potentially was slightly misleading and that some of the facts weren't necessarily accurate. So I think, just in fairness to the library too, without slamming them too hard here, I think let's let them go figure out kind of what the deal is in coordination with Stacy and the team. And let's really understand what the facts are first, you know, before we draw too many conclusions.
Well, I would say though, Bruce, that I think we shouldn't draw too much from one article in the source. There was no personal conversations between the reporter and the library or the town. And I think we just need to get our facts in order to see what's really happening. 100% agree with you. We fully fund them. We gave them a, an appropriate level of funding to keep their core operations going. There is also a difference between GAAP accounting, right, and cash accounting, which is kind of we deal with the operating budget. They look at things from a GAAP basis. So that's where I think some of these numbers are getting distorted a little bit because of GAAP accounts for other types of expenses, right? And depreciation and everything else. So I do 100% agree. I'm, you know, we also know that there was an unfortunate tragedy with one of their staff members this last week. And so we're going to get together with them. I'm going to have a meeting with them. And then I'll, we'll have a full report to the board at our next meeting. Okay? Because I do think some of this is just a little bit, you know, a mix up in terms of the information. It could be that is their fundraising maybe isn't, hasn't been as robust and that's where their gap is. But it's certainly not that the town hasn't met its obligations for the budget this year.
And of course, that is my bigger point is that the town is, the town is consistently.
Our part.
Yeah. And done so, I think, at a very fair rate. Although I'm a little dismayed now to hear that maybe the source has quoted library officials without actually speaking to them. That's, that's a whole different problem that.
My understanding is this was in an email exchange and not like a, you know, back and forth. So, you know, I think that's where, you know, we just need to understand better the facts. That's all. And I just wouldn't rely 100% on one particular article in the paper.
Paper's always perfect.
Well, I guess, you know, it's, it'd be one thing if it were the source was writing an article and didn't have any.
Yeah, but there's, there's another level of digging to understand what's driving things and more, you know what I mean? There's a couple of key pieces of information and then there's the next level down. And there's, there has no been, no digging into the next level down. So that's what I think we need to give the library the opportunity to, to talk about that.
And I would, I would ask maybe that we invite them in to explain where this disconnect has come from.
Yeah, no, I think that would be the plan. I'm supposed to have a call with them later this week because, you know, obviously their staff is very focused on some other issues right now.
Yeah, I understand that. And I would, I wouldn't, you know, but, but once they've got their arms around what's going on, they, they.
But we're also not even halfway through this fiscal year. So, you know, that's where, you know, we have plenty of time to sort through this, right? And, and there could be steps taken and decisions made to mitigate if there is, they're envisioning a problem, right? So. So, but to be continued and we'll certainly have them come and come to the board and talk about this.
All right.
So any other liaison reports? No? Okay, great. All right. And I guess with that, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Please raise your hand electronically.
There's one hand raised.
Okay, you want to go ahead and? Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
Jenny, did you want to say something?
Not in the meeting. I don't see her.
I don't see her up on the meeting, Jenny.
Oh, she's back. Hold on.
Hi, thanks. It looks like I'm unmuted now. Is that right?
Yes, yep.
Hi, yes, I'm Jenny Nye. I'm at 66 High Hill Circle. And I'm here with Melanie Lotti and Erin Barrett Kelly to express our concern about the quote notorious dead spot for cell phone service along Route 79 near Ryerson and Brown. I am a resident in this outage area, along with many others. My personal concern is that with two young children, I have no way to make a call from my house in the event of an internet outage. But I do believe that the larger concern is to our schools in that area. I've spent a lot of time searching for backup options for phone service and discovered that it's not possible to install a traditional landline anymore. Phone service is now provided through internet lines only. So what that means is when the internet is out, the phones are also out. And I'd just like to highlight two examples of this being a problem in our schools. Last spring, on May 30th, there was an outage at Ryerson and Brown during the school day. And parents received an email that they should contact the central office on town campus to reach staff members because the phone service was out. The fact that parents could not reach the schools and the schools did not have phone communication is a huge safety concern to me in today's world. Additionally, I taught a winter workshop at Ryerson over this past winter. And in the class, we had a student who had severe medical conditions. The front staff left for the day prior to the end of the workshops. And those of us volunteering to teach had no way to communicate in the school during that time. Fortunately, nothing happened, but it just felt very concerning to me to have no ability to call parents or call for help in case of an emergency. I do know, I know that the answer to this issue is a cell tower, which does come with many hurdles. But I think in a town like Madison, there should be an expectation of cell phone coverage for all residents and areas of town. So maybe in, in the process of decommissioning Ryerson, there may be an opportunity to remedy this issue and make the area safer for all of our students and staff and parents. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Okay, yeah, thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. We know this is, and Jenny, I know we've had some email exchanges. This is an important topic. It was raised in the strategic plan. We're spending some time looking at how do we improve communications and, and certainly hope to find some better solutions than, you know, where we are now. So thank you for the comment. Any other hands raised?
No.
Okay.
Yep, we got one.
We do have one. Hold on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. My name's Melanie Lotti. I work, I live at 280 Opening Hill Road. I've been in touch with Jenny and also Erin about this cell phone coverage issue, which I know you are, all are aware of and we're grateful for your work on it thus far. I just wanted to echo what Jenny said and also mention that, and I'm sure you're aware, but we have a growing remote workforce in Madison. I moved here in 2019, actually pre-COVID, and I was already remote. Worked very hard on leaving New York to get here, this beautiful community. I've tried all three major cell phone carriers in that time and have had a lot of issues with cell service at my house. I use Wi-Fi calling, but there have been a number of instances with power outages and internet outages that interrupt my work. Additionally, I think it's a really nice opportunity for remote workers to be able to work from different locations in town. I think that this is becoming much more common than it used to be. And having that opportunity to patronize local businesses who might not have the internet connectivity to, to support all of us. But if we're able to tether internet successfully, we can really patronize those, those businesses as we, as we work remotely from town. And I know that this impacts a lot of people, both, both in terms of, you know, the safety concerns that Jenny raised, but also just, you know, the, the opportunity to be a part of this modern workforce and live in such a beautiful coastline town. So I think, I think many of us would love to see improved communication infrastructure in town. I know you all have a lot of important issues to attend to and we're really grateful for your service to the town. But just wanted to highlight this one since I think it does impact a pretty large number of people, particularly in North Madison. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Melanie, I'm happy to be your champion as I live in the dead zone myself. So more to come on this for sure. It's been an issue for, since I moved here in 2001, so.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay.
Sarah, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. Sorry, I wasn't sure if you can hear me because I don't have great cell phone service. I live at 5 Milo Drive, Madison, Connecticut. And I am also one of these workforce from home. I do teletherapy from my house often and I have very horrible service. And so does my entire neighborhood, which really disrupts my ability to be able to have a home office. So I also am here for that concern as well as a growing number of my neighbors are becoming elderly and having extreme difficulties contacting medical providers and even 911 at one point when they had no service at all from their house. So I just wanted to represent our neighborhood and say that this is also a concern for us.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. I know this isn't an agenda topic today, but it will be coming back to discuss further. We've already talked about the communication study that we're undertaking. So thank you for sharing your experiences. Any other hands raised? Okay.
Yes, there's one more.
All right.
Hi, this is Erin. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. And also I just wanted to echo what, I'm, I'm here to talk about the cell phone coverage gaps as well. And I know Peggy, you and I have gone back and forth with some emails as well. So I just want to echo what the other three citizens said. And I just wanted to ask, can you give an update on where the, where we are with the communication study?
So during public comment, we just usually take feedback from the community. Also, this is not an agenda topic today, but in terms of updates, I'll have to check with the Chief of Police and R E M D. They're the ones running the study. So they have the funding. I think part of it is a scope issue because this is going to be covering a number of different topics in addition to cell phone coverage. But I don't have a status right today.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yep, thank you. Any other hands raised?
No.
Okay, well, with that, we've got a lot to get through today. Thank you for public comment. We'll move on to item number six, which is the consent agenda as presented. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Okay, and I'll second it. Any comments or questions? Just want to highlight, obviously, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We do this annually and we just appreciate people being sensitive to these issues and trying to raise awareness to the community. That all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, which is also another proclamation. And it is regarding one of our own residents, Ben Washburn, who recently won a silver medal in the Paralympics. And we just wanted to highlight this separately because we're going to be having an event to celebrate his accomplishments on October 15th at 4:30 at the Senior Center. And the public is welcome to do that. So I guess if I can get a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Great, and I won't read it. It'll be available for the public to see at our event on, on October 15th. We just want to congratulate him and we're excited to kind of get together as a community and celebrate his accomplishments in Paris. So any more comments or questions from board members? No, I don't think we have anybody from the family on, correct, Jenny?
Looked, yeah.
Yeah, they'll be attending the event. So, and he will be there as well as our state delegation. With that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Okay, great. And so that will be available for public consumption on the, on the 15th. Moving on to item number eight, which is an update from the Water Pollution Control Authority on the draft wastewater facilities plan. So I'm going to invite up now our committee chair, I think is here, as well as our health director. And then I think we have some representatives from Weston and Sampson, who are the consultants that have worked with us. So basically, the board did receive a draft of the plan. This has been ongoing for the last 12 months. I think we had an update in June. And this is the, and I think we just had kind of a presentation. Now you've got this ginormous document, I will call it, in front of you. And I, full disclosure, I actually got through page about 80. So I did, I am reading it. It's very in-depth. I learned a lot about the soil conditions of Madison. And there's a lot of great information about our flood plain. You know, there's, it's a really, actually a really good document, just in terms of updated information about the town, you know, and the kind of lay of the land of the town right now. But it's also talking about how, what do we, what steps do we take to mitigate future problems, right? With our, with our water and our wastewater. And so Trent, I guess, is there a PowerPoint presentation?
Good morning. Yes, Tom is going to be, I think there's three, two to three slides that Tom is going to be speaking to today. Tom, your, your screen is still muted.
Is Weston and Sampson attending or?
I don't see them on here, no.
I don't believe so. It would be Jenny, it would be John Ruvo or Madgermine?
See him.
Okay.
I don't see him, yeah. Okay, well, we'll, let's move forward. Do you want to, Tom, do you want to kind of kick us off then?
Sure. I know how excited we all are, probably waiting with faded breath on this exciting program here. But if I, let me just start off with a couple of comments. Last month, the WPCA, working with our consultant, completed a draft report on wastewater management in town. We provided copies of the report to the Board of Selectmen with the expectation that the board will review and comment before we go to a final public presentation. The draft plan will then be sent to DEP for review and comment as well. DEP has provided funding for the plan and if approved, they can provide further funding during the implementation. DEP refers to this as a wastewater facilities plan, and you've heard me talk about that before. So as you know, the town is required to have a water pollution control plan in place and to periodically evaluate existing practices and programs that can be implemented. Currently, all wastewater disposal in town is accomplished by individual septic systems. The construction and upkeep of them are the responsibility of the homeowner and governed by the Department of Public Health regulations. And the town's health director is responsible for permitting new systems and repairs. So with that in mind, the WPCA set forth some objectives in order to evaluate our current plan and to consider certain new programs. And Jenny, if I can share my screen, or maybe I am sharing my screen, let's see.
No, we can't see anything right now, so.
Okay.
Do you know how to do that, to share it?
Well.
They're not letting you?
It used to be a little toggle at the bottom, let you share the screen, but I don't see that on mine now.
Jenny, you need to give, enable him to share. It's funny here, I'll see if I can do this. It says one participant can share at a time. Oh, host and panel, oh no. It's showing that you're able to. Here, let me try that.
Video participants chat, raise hand, share, okay, let's try that. How's that?
Nope.
Nope.
Do you want to just email it to Trent and then he can just pull it up? Oh wait, it's coming. Okay.
That's the Word document. Do you have it in a PowerPoint?
Yeah, I do. That's what I've got up here.
You're showing your Word document.
All right, well, I'll close that.
That's the only thing I have, Trent, is the Word document.
Right.
Okay, you don't see the PowerPoint, huh?
You can send it over to me and I'll share it.
Okay.
Let me know what it said.
How come my, it won't let me share the screen then?
When I'm seeing on here that everybody's able to.
Yeah. It should be the green arrow down at the bottom.
Yeah, I've got it here and I clicked on it.
You click that and then click the PowerPoint slide, the PowerPoint slide screen so that you can share that one.
Yeah, okay.
And you have to have it open, the PowerPoint slide open so it'll.
Yeah, it is open, yeah. I got the share button. I'll click that.
I would just email it to Trent and he could pull it up.
Well, you have the Word document up?
No, we did have it up, but it's probably better if it was the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Tom, do you have two screens?
No.
Because sometimes that complicates it when you have two screens. Because I've had that happen, I just turn off my other screen because somehow it shows up and the other screen is just a.
Okay, let's try this, yeah. All right, Trent, I'll send it over now.
Maybe while we're waiting to pull up the presentation, Tom, if we could just talk briefly about kind of steps. Your commission has not formally approved this or, you're not formally recommending it right now, right? You haven't voted on this as final? You're waiting for us to give you some feedback first?
That's right. What we've got is a concept or a series of recommendations to be considered at this point. And it includes working more closely with individual homeowners to upgrade their systems and possibly put together some kind of a funding program to assist on that. The document looked at sewer-ing and other more extreme options, but we haven't adopted those as part of the recommendations right now.
And has there been, I was just kind of thinking about this as I went through this, I mean, a couple of different things. You know, we just finished a new P O C D. So I know there's a lot of references in this to the 2013 P O C D and I'm wondering if it's worth at least having a quick review of the new P O C D to make sure there's nothing different or, you know, that, I don't think it would change your conclusions, but just in terms of this document, you know? Because that was just finalized in September. The Planning and Zoning Commission adopted it and this board voted on it in September. The other thing I was wondering about, just going as I read through this, is the COG. You know, you talk about the regional mitigation plan and I know that had been updated and do we need to run this by the COG to get their feedback? Because I know we did that with the P O C D, for example. So would it be worth having, you know, I don't know what, and this is maybe a question for Weston and Sampson, like when they've worked with other communities, do they usually have a step where they allow the, our, you know, regional organization to review it? Because they do the hazard mitigation plan, you know, and this kind of all fits within that. And then the third group I was thinking about, and I'm not trying to, I just was going through this thinking, is the Coastal Resiliency Commission, because there's references to the 2013 Coastal Resiliency Plan. And these are all groups, like when the P O C D, and I was just reflecting on the P C D process, usually we would allow these different entities that are kind of feeding into this to also have a chance just to review the plan and make comment. So has that happened? And, you know, or is that, are you planning to have that happen?
Well, it has happened to some extent. The, I think Martin Brogie, who's on our W P C A, is also on the P O C D or he's already provided comments back to us. It's been sort of a liaison between us and the P O C D. We haven't talked to the COG, but we can certainly provide them with a draft copy to review as well. And D E P will really make sure that it's consistent with other reports, in other words, like the statewide P O C D and other documents. And there's a section in the report which touches on a lot of these other parallel studies and mentions how this project is consistent with those studies as well. But the COG, I hadn't really thought about. And we can certainly talk to Weston Sampson about that.
Okay, great. So we've got the PowerPoint up.
Okay, thanks. And sorry about that. I don't know why I couldn't share it myself. So just wanted to go over some quick objectives that we had for the study. And we set forth the following objectives. To improve and maintain high-quality ground and surface water standards. Objective two is to meet the town's responsibility to manage wastewater disposal within its boundaries. Objective three, implement a water pollution control plan in accordance with the E E P regulations. Objective four, to provide flexibility for property owners and public health officials. Objective five, to avoid complicated alternatives that would hinder their implementation. Objective six, avoid expensive alternatives that hinder affordability. Objective seven, maximize the use of existing town resources. And objective eight, to include realistic financing with funding to control homeowner costs. And of course, this is only anticipating that some project will come out of this study that will require funding or assistance in that regard. So the document covers a lot of detail, as you noted, Peggy, with regard to existing conditions and it includes a description of the process that Weston and Sampson used to make these evaluations. And it also outlines various programs and improvements that we would have you consider for implementation. And that was mainly with the W P C A and the Health Department providing input. And a full description of the recommendations, including the draft plan. But this is sort of a summary of the salient points right here, this slide. So in something called a decentralized wastewater management district, what that means is that, well, let me just read through what the plan is. The option that's been endorsed by the W P C A as the recommended plan is these decentralized wastewater management districts. Under that approach, continued use of onsite septic systems will continue to be the primary method for disposal of wastewater. However, in areas of concern, additional requirements may be imposed on a lot-by-lot basis. All properties in a district will need to comply with the Public Health Code and certain new wastewater management district standards. These standards may include increased groundwater separation distance and/or leaching field components that maximize the lateral spread of effluent. Sesspools and other systems that don't have a septic tank will be considered substandard. And the report goes into some details to what exactly all that means, you know, with the leaching fields and things like that. In a wastewater management district, the town will partner with property owners in upgrading their systems. And we intend to provide, to make some funding assistance available to property owners. A T U's is something that else has been talked about in the report. An A T U is an advanced treatment unit, which is a step above a conventional septic system. It's a sort of like a little package mini treatment plant on a lot. And additional funding may be applied to encourage their use in some of these areas of concern. Funding would not be available for construction of any new residential property and would not be available to properties that are identified as subject to abandonment due to sea level rise. Again, this is just a summary and what I've highlighted in yellow here really is the primary recommendations coming out of the report. There's still a lot of ground to cover in terms of, you know, defining where these wastewater management districts are. We know generally where we are. We haven't drafted any kind of an ordinance or regulation with regard to them. We still need D E P to see if they would agree to a plan like this. And frankly, there's, what we're presenting here is more of a concept than a final plan. But it's time to, you know, sit back and consider with the selectmen and with the state if this plan has legs and if we can use it. Our main intent here was to not embark on a wide-scale sewer project, which, you know, the report will go on to explain, you know, forty, fifty million dollars worth of sewers to pick up some of these areas of concern. And of course, sewers means, you know, a long, long time period to plan, develop and build. And the number of properties that would really require such a program is not great. So, you know, if you sewer an area, you got the, you know, a hundred percent of the properties have to pay for it when, you know, maybe ten or twenty percent of the properties are really in need of some alternative like that. So we still need a bit of assistance or quite a bit of assistance really from our consultant in this regard and additional funding because, you know, we set a, this facility plan, we had a budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, earned appropriation. And we're at the point now where that's been expended and the implementation is going to be the next step that really has to get structured out a little bit more. So by presenting the report to you today, we hope that you will, at some point, sit down and look through it and understand the reasoning behind this recommendation and determine if the town is on board. And we'll have to do a public meeting as well. There'll have to be public presentations. I anticipate a workshop with the Board of Selectmen and some public presentations, and our consultant will run those and get some feedback and then move forward. There's no immediate need, like this doesn't have to be acted on in any particular timeframe, but it is out there now and we'd like to continue to develop it to the point where it can be adopted and Trent, his department can, you know, pick up the management of it down the road.
So in the spirit of, at the conceptual level, and Tom, this is an amazing summary that you've shepherded through multiple years. Like, the detail is incredible. But at the highest level, what I think, what I hear a saying is that the town should or will adopt performance standards for septic systems. I'm going to use plain English. I'm not using any terms of art here. That we'll develop standards for septic systems. And in those areas where septic systems aren't performing, oh, we'll codify that in some sort of ordinance, provide Trent with the resources he needs to manage the ordinances and the standards. And then come up with an implementation plan, triggering events that would cause substandard systems to need to be brought into compliance. And further, I think this report is suggesting that the town somehow participate financially with the homeowners in accomplishing that. Are those the real high points?
Yes, Bruce, you've hit the nail on the head.
Okay, so.
I think your reading is correct, right?
So the, conceptually, the only place where I get a little bit confused is the town participating financially with the homeowners. And what would make, say, a homeowner in one of these districts more eligible for town money than, say, somebody, you know, with a septic system that needs work in another part of town? I guess what I'm saying is, why would we consider helping a homeowner replace their septic system?
Well, it's, you know, that will be the question, especially when we solicit public input. But we will have to use the facilities plan and the approval process of the D E P and then set up a legal structure for that, whether it's an ordinance or regulations. Now, that will also trigger the availability of state funding to be brought into the program. So it wouldn't all be necessarily on the town. It would be state funding as well as the town funding. Now.
But, Tom, I think, I'm just sorry to interrupt, but I think what I'm taking away from Bruce's question is more in this plan, it highlights the hazards, right, of these specific districts because they are where their groundwater is threatened to be contaminated. So people's wells could be contaminated. They're also subject to sea level rise, right? So their flood risk is at a greater flood risk because of these districts, right? So that's different than if you live somewhere else in Madison, you're not in a floodplain. You know, your lot size is different, your soil conditions are different so that you aren't creating, there's no potential for some sort of environmental hazard, right? Is that a better way to describe it? Or maybe Trent, you have a good way? Like, the whole thing here is mitigation, like future mitigation of groundwater contamination, correct?
Sure. So I do want to try and answer Bruce's question directly, Tom, and feel free to chime in. So you know why the areas of concerns are somewhat significant to the coast? And so a property inland, they would have land, different soil and lot sizes, Peggy mentioned, when it comes time for public health compliance in subsurface sewage disposal systems. These areas of concern, they have unique characteristics, soil, lot size. Not all, public water is available, so it's not usually related to these properties being on well and having to obtain that seventy-five-foot setback distance from that. The impacts, though, environmentally are related to nitrogen reduction, it being, you know, It being, you know, tightly influenced properties or floodplain or, or, you know, properties that are subject to flooding. But a lot of it is also related to the soil in certain areas. And, you know, in prior meetings, we've identified those areas that may be, if they're not tightly influenced, they are maybe near inland wetlands. So the soil is not allowable for that, you know, septic compliance and I guess performance. Now, why would the town participate in funding it? I, I think that is a, that's a good question and I, and I, I think the way that the facilities plan needs to be designed in a way of where the town is participating in active maybe solutions to alleviate those potential environmental hazards. So if the town's not, the plan is not to construct maybe sewers in these areas or in town in general, then what is the town is going to do? Like what responsibilities is the town going to have or take to make sure that, you know, these things could be accomplished? And I think that's what maybe DEP is going to want to see. Some type of commitment to that. It could just be like this local ordinance. I think the funding component is separate too. Hopefully that helps.
Okay. And I'm not looking for us to solve this in real time. I, I just, I just bring it up as a, as an issue of fairness. The, the idea that a system could be out of compliance or fail in a, in Scott's neighborhood and somehow have an adverse effect on Scott or his neighbors or a local water source is, is not impossible. And so why would we make one group eligible for public funding and another group not? And so I, I think as this gets discussed further internally, the, the issue of fairness needs to be addressed. Now, we're not talking about state funds. If we can be a conduit for pre-existing state funds into these homes because of their situation, then that's a completely different thing. I'm talking about property tax dollars in the town of Madison. You know, North Madison property tax dollars supporting waterfront septic systems. That, 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 we, we need to address the fairness issue. That's, that's really my only interest in bringing it up. All the other stuff, I think is spot on.
Well, well, I think the, the part of the fairness issue too, though, is if you're in one of these districts, you're, you're being required to do something versus if you're not in the district, you're not being required, right? So that's where, so, yeah.
They, they have to raise their house to be in compliance with FEMA, but we don't ask North Madison residents to pay for it.
Only if they're wanting to make changes to their house. So I would say that's, that's going to be the whole ordinance discussion that we go through, I think. Absolutely. These are all relevant and important topics of discussion. And to your point, it's, that's going to be the ordinance discussion, right? How are we going to approach this? What, when are we going to provide funding? Are we going to provide funding? I mean, right now we have no funding to offer, right? And there's also a implementation requirement for funding in terms of staff, if you saw in the document. So there's going to be a lot to talk about moving forward. And, and maybe that leads us to the conversation about how do we want to tackle this as a board? You know, they've done a tremendous amount of work. They've identified the, uh, the issues. They've come up with a solution that is the most cost effective out of the options, right? How do we as a board, do we want to allow them to kind of come up with their conclusions and recommendation to us and then we take up the implementation piece? Or how, or do we want to be this to be kind of more of a cooperative approach with it, with the WPCA?
I would love to see.
I like the idea of recommendations Peggy, that they come up with, at least, you know, to sort of help guide us with future actions, whether it be an ordinance or not. But I think, I think helping us with that recommendations, given they're closest to it as opposed to us just reading the report, I think would, would help.
Right. Yeah. To build on what Scott said, identifying what the standards are, the likely number of properties and, and geography of, of impacted houses and then a draft ordinance that is the implementation of it for us to consider. I don't think we're prepared to take part in the creation of, of all of those things. I think we need those to come to us as a pretty complete.
Which they've done pretty much, I will say they're pretty much there, right? I think Tom and Trent and, and I think it's maybe getting some additional feedback from the cog. The other thing I was going to highlight, staff, you know, I don't know if this has been run by our town planner as well as our town engineer. You know, maybe there's a few more rounds, Tom and Trent on your side. And I know it references a 2018 draft ordinance. I guess it had been proposed. Have you like updated that draft ordinance to reflect what your recommendations are or is that to come?
Yeah, I think there are, there's probably some minor changes. But yeah, I would, I would also say that the point of where we are now, the, the draft plan, the executive summary provides more, like pretty much the everything in terms of what the study covered and the findings and the conclusions. You know, I think that there is a second step to like creating this draft ordinance. I mean, we do have something already created. Well, Tom and WPC, we have some created that we've commented on over the past couple of years. So I think the next thing is probably getting feedback from the board, you know, seeing like questions like Bruce, like you had in terms of the funding component, which are valid questions. However, I think there's also that, again, I just want to reiterate the obligation as far as I know, that the town has to take and to be eligible for the, you know, the funding. I know that the town has already acquired some of the funding already in terms of reimbursement. But until the plan is officially submitted to DEP, would they then give the remainder of, of the balance?
And I know, and I don't know if this is for you or for Tom, but I know on slide four, you guys referenced, you know, sort of the implications to the town. I, I think it was something in yellow, whatever the yellow slide was, maybe I'm missing, yeah, slide three. But when, when is, I think that the biggest question for the public is going to be, when do I have to comply? Do we have a sense? Are we recommending, you know, by, you know, 2030, this needs to be in place or, you know, something kind of specific that people will, will be able to react to?
Yeah. Scott, that's, that's a great question. And Bruce, you also raised a good question. And right now it's, I, I think there is an implementation schedule in the study, but it's not a statutory kind of a thing. We, we can, we can move at our own pace. Once we iron out the details and determine what resources might be available to implement this. Now, the one thing to remember and, and, I mean, we need to have this discussion about funding. But the WPCA's main focus really is on compliance and environmental protection. That, that being said, we know it doesn't work in a vacuum. We know there's going to be reactions from the public and from the people who are affected. But some of the things that we looked at was maybe once a district is established, funding can be extracted from the district. Maybe not in the form of a fee, but perhaps a an additional charge on a pump out, for example. So that it doesn't have to be, you know, you know, just the town participating with other people's dollars. We, we could, we could do something like that. But there's also some precedent. I think the town has some tax deferrals and tax, tax forgiveness programs. You know, where certain people have benefited over others in the town. But, you know, these are all, you know, obstacles or not obstacles, but all details that need to be hashed out before you, you put a stamp and say, okay, the program is in effect. You know, whether it's one year, two years, three years down the road and say, okay, now the program is in effect. Before we do that, we have to really look at what it costs to the town. And, you know, some of these systems are, you know, you don't have to do a hundred systems in a year. You can do a couple of systems in a year, in which case the numbers probably fall into quite a, 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 a low, low impact category in terms of the budget and things. But we need to have that realistic discussion. And this is great because that's exactly, you've already looked at this report and have a concept of what's coming up down the road. And, and that's great because that's why we're presenting it to you now so that, you know, we can start these discussions. And I, I think it's so, the, the report, well, we're, we're in agreement that the report still needs effort from our consultant to structure it a little bit better, to run the numbers a little bit more. And to do a good job on public participation and, and getting input. So we'll be coming back to you, Peggy, and to the, to the board with an amendment for them to provide some additional what, what we think is essential implementation steps.
Well, and, and I guess the takeaway from here, right? What, from what I'm hearing is that in general, the board is in agreement of the waste management district concept versus public sewers or community systems, right? So there's support about the waste management districts approach. And there's many reasons you lay out in the report why this makes the most sense for the way our community is structured. And so knowing that, then it's all about, well, how does that work? And what's the implementation plan and how do we pay for it, right? And you're going to come forward with kind of your commission's recommendations after getting feedback from different groups. This board then takes up and, you know, we'll agree with some of it and some of it we might want to structure a different way, right? But I'm just trying to think through steps, right? So we'll, you know, it may be that you'll recommend this has to be done in X number of years and the town will fund X amount and then the board will say, you know, we want to take it in a different direction, how to implement it. Is that okay, that process? Is my board agree with that process? And I, because I don't want your commission to feel as if we're not valuing your recommendations, you know what I mean? We just might not, as we dig into this deeper, we might think about it a little differently than you as a commission, right? Think about it.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly correct. And we, we know that the recommendations coming out of the facilities plan might, might not be fully adopted or, or they might be changed in some, some manner or form. But it is, it, it, it is our responsibility to at least put them out there focused pretty specifically on water pollution control. And, but, but then it's up to the, you know, town governing authorities to really determine what's implementable and what isn't, what the public feedback is. And while we're on that, there's a little fly in the ointment here. My term is up at the end of the year. And we're going to, I'm probably not going to remain on the WPCA. I've been on it forever. But certainly we need a new chairperson and perhaps some new blood on the WPCA to beef it up a little bit. As we go through kind of these next steps, which are important. And for our town planner, maybe to be involved a little bit more with the WPCA at this point to help shepherd the programs through the boards and things like that. Just something to consider. You know, we're not just dumping it on you and leaving you. We, we still have.
I was gonna say, you're leaving it the best part, Tom. It took us long.
But it's, it's something that Trent and I have been talking about and, and WPCA has been enthusiastic about moving forward with this and they will continue to be. I'm not sure who else is up for renewal, but we'll, 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 we'll have to check into that a little bit.
So I think that this is to, obviously a conversation to be continued. You have some action items on your commission. And, and I do think if, you know, in, for those who have really kind of gone through this on the board, you know, you can always shoot an email and, you know, if there's a word you think is a problem or, or the way some things phrase, I think that's always good to just give that kind of feedback to them directly. And then I think once you go through your further reviews, you know, we'll have another meeting topic on this, okay?
That, that's perfectly fine. And I think the next thing I might ask our consultant to do, and well, they've already talked to the DEP and there's additional funding available for them to add some scope and, and time to their original agreement to get more involved in this implementation phase, even though it's not fully adopted yet. The DEP recognizes that for it to be fully adopted and everyone's agreement, we, we need to flesh that out a little bit more. So you may see an amendment request coming from Westman and Sampson on that. So you can consider that as endorsed by the WPCA and consider that when it, when it shows up.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you for all this hard work to your commission, to Trent. It's an impressive document. And, you know, we'll continue the conversation, you know, moving forward. So thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, great. Thanks. And I just, so the public, it's, it's pretty weighty. I had to have it print out. That's the one I couldn't really read on my iPad. So we'll move on then if the board is good, going on to item number nine. Discuss and take action to enter into a five-year capital lease agreement with M and T Bank for the purchase of the approved 2025 CIP highway equipment replacement schedule and authorize in the first block when to sign all documents associated with this lease pending Board of Finance approval. Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
I have, I do have a question. So when I was reading the list, I understand these are all already approved in the CIP. But the VenTrak O31121-TTC, I didn't, I didn't immediately recognize what that was. So I went to the manufacturer's website and, and there is no, in the VenTrak website, there is no O31121-TTC tractor. There is, there is no tractor by that model number. So I'm wondering what it is.
That's a good question. I don't know if we have anybody, is that something we can ask? Kristin, I know is usually the one that organizes all this, which I don't think she's on.
She is, she is on.
Oh, she is on? Okay. Oh, Austin is, Austin is here. Austin, if we want to elevate Austin to answer that question. Go ahead, Austin. You can unmute. Yep.
Hey, thanks guys. So it's a sidewalk parking lot, snow machine, snow tractor.
What has a, what is it have a brush or a snowblow?
Or a plow? It's got a brush and a special like attachment that allows it to do sidewalks without ripping up the, without, without damaging the sidewalks. So we use it on, use it downtown. We use it on the Texas walkway, a town campus.
All right. Well, I mean, I was just, I didn't know what it was. I looked it up and it didn't exist though.
Yeah, the, the, the model might be, might be wrong, but that's, that's what it is though.
I mean, they use that down, they use that on like, yeah, the sidewalks and I've seen the.
Second machine or?
It exists. It's not, yeah, it might just be the, the model number or something. I don't. Exists, it's not, yeah, it might just be the, the model number or something, I don't know. We'll have her verify, okay, that we're getting, we're buying what we're supposed to be buying. We'll make sure about that, that is, uh, the case.
Awesome.
Okay. All right. Yep. And, uh, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Um, and number 10 is just an update from, uh, our town planner on just some of, you know, what's going on within the land use department. Uh, you know, there's different projects going on and I've tried to have her come and come back on roughly on a quarterly basis. So, um, you know, Erin, if you want to just kind of highlight some of the different things going on in town.
Are you? I have the right microphone on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks. Um, I have to switch sometimes between teams and Zoom. Um, so I have, uh, a few updates on some projects since the last time we met. As well as just some general department updates. Um, first I can go through office updates. Uh, we're currently transitioning, uh, positions again in our department. Uh, we recently hired a part-time technician. Um, that position as of last, uh, budget session was reduced to nineteen hours. Um, so we did fill that position and are, um, uh, looking forward to training, uh, Bob Gerard and getting him out in the field and doing some inspections and assisting Maria and I. Um, and we're also transitioning, um, our administrative assistant position, um. Our current admin, uh, her last day is this Friday and we're actively seeking, uh, candidates to replace her. Um, so we'll, we'll just keep treading water a little bit. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll have our technician help out a little bit in the, in the front end until we fill that position. But, but hopefully soon we'll be back up to four members. Um, and then otherwise in our department, we're actively going through, um, our scanning project of all our historic land use, uh, commission files. Uh, we've completed two out of three phases, um, of scanning and we're just finalizing our naming convention. Um, which will allow a lot of our historic records to be available online to the public. Uh, so that's exciting. I have a net flying in me, sorry. Um, so that's great. And that's what, what we're doing, um, in-house and, um, in addition to that, we've had several, um, larger applications, I guess, or. Um, the more mixed use or commercial developments over the last several months. Our biggest news, uh, which Peggy did, uh, mention, and I think you, um, reviewed that at your last meetings in, in September. The, the planning and zoning commission completed their two-year-long process of drafting their, um, update to the plan of conservation and development. So that ten-year plan, um, is finally completed. And, uh, we had a lot of help from Taike Planning and Policy Group, um, and their guidance and, and leadership as well. So that, that was a success. Uh, so we're looking forward to implementing that and taking a short hiatus before. Jumping into our, uh, zoning regulation update here. But, but we do have, uh, monies available for our, our zoning code update. So, um, we will be, uh, getting an RFP out, uh, before the end of the year. Applications, you'll see some that are under construction now as you're driving around town. Uh, forty-eight A and B Wall Street is a three-story commercial office building that was approved in the downtown village district. Um, and that's underway. We have, um, eight eighty-five around the corner, eight eighty-five Boston Post Road, which was approved as a two-story office building. Um, the old Elizabeth's Cafe that was demolished, um, uh, finished up last week. So that's going to be, uh, getting started. We have, um, some site work happening at thirteen thirty-nine and thirteen forty-one Boston Post Road. Um, looking to, uh, advertise that, that mixed use development. It's two separate, uh, three-story commercial residential buildings. That's the infill, um, of the marketplace in between the Hammond Asset Package Store and the, the Cohen's Bagel Development there. So no permits pulled for that yet. They still have, uh, some state level approvals they need to have. Um, but, uh, they did do, uh, some, some site clearing and grubbing there. Um, uh, similarly on New Road, on the south side of New Road at the intersection of Duck Hole. Uh, that is, uh, the Horton Group's property. There's an approval for, uh, twenty-two thousand square foot medical office building there. Um, as you drive by, you'll see that they've got some construction fencing out and, uh, have started some site clearing as well. No building permits have been pulled for that, uh, yet either.
So Erin, across the street from that, that has been approved for a plan for housing, is that?
There is a residential development, uh, town home style, uh, development that is approved on the north side. That's one fifty-five New Road. Um, and that was approved late last year, um, but there's no, uh, no activity on that project yet. The other one over on the east end Cottage Road, that's the Wellington, as you've seen, they're, they're running along, uh, quickly. Uh, trying to, to come to a close and get their, uh, final compliance and COs, uh, and, and begin, um, having tenants move in. Um, so we're, we're keeping an eye on that and doing some final inspections as well. Stony Lane, this is the, uh, north side of Barbary Hill Farm. There is an open space conservation district, uh, subdivision there for six lots. And, uh, they're getting started running a water main, uh, to service those houses on Stony Lane. It's coming off of Fort Path. So if you're in that general area, you'll see that activity. As well as, uh, some sightline clearing for driveways and, uh, they're getting through the inland wetlands process. For, uh, regulated activity permits and they'll be, uh, beginning construction shortly on those six units. And lastly, uh, for applications, um, the planning and zoning commission, um, took final resolution for six opening hill road, uh, on Thursday night's meeting. That's the Tremaine Emily Hall Tremaine Foundation, um, that was a rather contentious application. And, um, lasted roughly five months through the process. Uh, so they, um, had a few meetings of deliberations and, um, were very thoughtful, I think in their, um, resolution process. And they, they came to an approval with conditions which reduce some of the, um, uses that were requested by the applicant. Um, and put in some other safeguards, um, to, um, uh, reduce any potential impacts to the neighboring, um, developments. And, uh, some of those included some, uh, site work on opening hill road, uh, as, um, volunteered by the applicant at the suggestion of their traffic consultant, Dave Sullivan. Um, and that includes some, um, uh, guide rails and some advanced, uh, signage, uh, coming into that Neck River Bridge. There and, uh, some, uh, reflectors, uh, in that general area in light of the recent, uh, car accident that occurred during the application process.
Erin, hold on to that bridge.
How old?
Who owns?
Who owns it?
Yeah.
Um, it straddles, um, it, the, the river is the, um, Guilford Madison line. So it's both municipalities would be involved.
Can we just call it Guilford and have them fix it?
Yes.
So that's, uh, we've been busy. That, that's.
What's going on with the, um, I, I drive by it a lot, but sort of, as sort of as you're heading towards, you pass Bruce's house, you're heading towards, uh, uh, Green Hill Road and those houses they're building on the left-hand side. Yeah. What's, what's, what's going on there? Is there a road going in?
That's a pending application. The lot, the house that, the sealed Daniel Hand House that you're talking about, just north of Green Hill.
They demoed that, right?
Yep.
Yep. So the Daniel Hand House was demolished, um, and, uh, with permits. And there is one building lot, uh, to the north of that, that was, um, a leftover lot from a subdivision. And so that's what that, uh, new house is under construction currently. The property that has the Daniel Hand, uh, house is, uh, before the planning and zoning commission now for an open space conservation district. It's a zoning, um, map amendment, basically a floating zone that would allow, um, the developer to, uh, create four building lots while preserving a minimum of fifty percent open space on that property. They've gone through wetlands already, um, wetlands had, uh, deemed, uh, there's a crossing of a, a small stream. In the middle of the property to access, uh, the, the rear half. That was a significant activity. They had a third-party environmental, um, uh, consultant review the application and make some recommendations. And they ultimately approved that crossing and that common driveway, um, private road, common driveway for, um, that development. But ultimately now it's the planning and zoning commission who would look at that open space, uh, and making sure that the proposal and the development plan meets all of the criteria in that district.
What the total acreage is back there, Erin? If, if you know, that's fine.
I can look it up. I think it's six.
Six acres, okay. The building lots would be acre building lots?
No, they're half acre.
The tight, okay.
There, that's, I mean, the, the real purpose of that is to kind of cluster and, and concentrate your development in a certain area to preserve a greater, uh, portion as open space. And, um, that open space would be deed restricted. Uh, in this particular case, the applicant is proposing to have, um, it's, uh, the gross li- land area is eight point eight acres. I was, I was short, sorry. The, um, the land wouldn't be recommended to land trust or the town. It's not contiguous with any other open space. So in this particular, uh, case, the applicant is looking just to deed restrict that under a homeowners association for maintenance.
Nice.
So that hearing will continue, um, at our, uh, October seventeenth meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, you're talking with me now?
Yeah, I can't hear you Peggy.
Sorry, the, um, I know you're moving towards the, the commission is moving towards a review of the, uh, zoning, you know, codes in Madison. There's, you're starting that process, I guess, next year. So it would be good to figure out, coordinate with the board, I think, just because there are a lot of policy things that drive, you know, zoning codes and, um, and I know you're looking to do, you know, some of it's like cleaning things up, making things, simplifying it and doing all that. But I, I do feel like there's some policy oriented changes that our board should probably weigh in on and have a conversation with the commission about. So I just want to kind of, you know, lay out there that this is going to be coming next year and we probably want to, as a board and Jen is our liaison, obviously the P and Z. Think about how we want to provide some of that input to the planning and zoning commission. Cause that'll be, you know, a big discussion next year in the community, I think. Uh, they, they need a little break after the P O C D, right? And then, uh, and then they ramp up for, uh, this and you'll be hiring a consultant for that as well, right?
We, we do have money for a consultant, yes.
Yeah. Okay, good.
To bring on board.
So we do, we do have a, a, a few other things and I know I have a hard stop at ten. So are there any other specific questions for Erin right now? Um, so I think it's just great to, you know, we'll get updates on, on a lot going on in town, but, uh, appreciate the update. Um, I, uh, the other thing I would flag is I will probably be doing a legal review for the board in executive session, maybe in November or December. So there has been some decisions on different cases that the town has been involved, including, uh, some involving land use. And so I think it's just good to get you guys updated on where those are. Um, we weren't quite ready for that this month, but we should, I'll, I'll flag that for November or December. Okay? All right, great. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, and number 11 is discussion of proposed amendments to the town employee personnel policies and benefits. And we'll invite up, uh, Deb Ferrante, our HR director. And there was a memo that was in your packet with some recommendations. Um, some of these things are more just the board would adopt revisions to the personnel policies. Remember last year we did a wholesale like update because it was just very outdated. And then the thought was every year we might coming back with some modifications, uh, you know, for different sections. So this is more some on benefits for employees. Um, and so we would, if, you know, we're amenable to some of these changes today, we could come back and just like vote on updating the policy at another meeting. Some of them have, uh, budget implications, some of them don't. So that's why I wanted to have the conversation now. If we're supportive, then we will kind of roll those into the budget and then, uh, proposed budget, obviously. That has to go through both boards and the public voting on it, uh, but some of these aren't really budget related. So. Um, so with that, I don't know how, uh, Deb, if you just want to talk through, you know, there was several little areas in your, in your memo, if you want to just talk through each one of those.
So what I did.
You got some compar- you got some comparables also to support or recommendations.
Yes. So what I did is I looked at, um, towns that were in proximity to Madison. Towns that we would recruit from. So if we were posting a job, hopefully they would look at Madison over, say, a Branford, a Guilford, a Groton, New London, things like that. And, um, three of the items that I identified were vacation, personal days and defined contribution. So now that we have updated the personnel policy and we did that as a big update for January one, twenty twenty-four. What we'd like to do is keep our personnel policy current. So that when we are giving out this policy to any new employees, we're giving them a current copy and not something that has been outdated by a number of years. So as I was saying, the three items that I looked at that tend to be one of the first questions that employees are looking for when they're trying to find out about Madison and joining us as an employee. Is vacation, personal time. So the time off, what they get. And obviously the defined contribution, what does Madison offer? They do know that we no longer have a pension, so they are concerned and interested in our defined contribution. So those three items are the items that I chose to look at now. Right now, most towns or a good handful of towns are going to a four-day personal day per fiscal year. The way it is in our town and all towns is you get four personal days or three personal days currently, which is what we have. And it's a use it or lose it. So you get the time to use for a personal business. Or something that's not covered as a, say a vacation day, if you needed to see a lawyer, if you needed to take care of family business. Um, and it's a use it or lose it. So if you do not use it in the current fiscal year, you lose it. And then you get the new allotment in the next fiscal year. So a lot of towns are moving from three to four days. The other one is the vacation. These are the two that do not have any financial impact to the town. So what we're trying to do is bring Madison in a more comparable vacation allotment policy. And we found that we're kind of falling short at the ten-year mark. Where a lot of towns are giving a better vacation allotment at a new hire status, five year and then ten year and then fifteen. We're falling short at the ten-year mark because our employees don't increase their benefits until they get them at five and then it goes to fifteen. So we'd like to do that. And we'd also like to bring it in line with some of our union groups because our union groups have a better vacation allotment than the unaffiliated. So I'm only talking about unaffiliated benefits because any union employee benefit would need to be negotiated. And that comes up when we do contract renewals. Um, so anyway, those are the two items, personal and vacation that do not have a financial impact to the town. We do not hire people to cover for a vacation. We don't bring in temps. We don't bring in any outside help. So when an employee takes a vacation day in the unaffiliated group, it doesn't cost the town anything.
So I, and, and I will say one other, uh, consideration on the vacation is just that, you know, we do, we do a lot of lateral hires for, because a lot of our positions are, you have to have certifications and qualifications. So we end up giving the lateral hires, matching what they had in their previous communities. So now you've got a disconnect between employees who have been here a while, getting less vacation than somebody that's hired in laterally. So this was also trying to just match really what. Really what the pool is, you know, so that people, you know, who have been here a while feel like, well, why, why are they getting more vacation than what I'm getting? And I've been here longer, so. You know, I think that particularly with the uh, that, you know, to, it takes another ten years to get the extra week of vacation right now. Uh, for our employees, and so that's, I think, where we see an issue sometimes. So we have to, in order to attract the new employee to fill a vacancy, we have to offer them more time than what's on our policy.
Yes. And then the third item is the defined contribution. Right now. Our union groups are all at a potential of a seven percent max. The unaffiliated group is the only group that's at six percent, so I'd like to recommend that we consider. Moving the unaffiliated group from six percent to a seven percent potential match, and obviously that's up to the employee. Not every employee try, puts in as much as seven percent, but at least if it's there, employees can take advantage of it. The other thing is the vesting schedule. Currently, Madison has a five-year cliff vesting schedule, which means. You're here for five years and then you do get the full match. What I am finding in all of our surrounding towns is that it's a five-year vesting, so. What, if you're here for one year, you get twenty percent. If you're here for two years, you get forty percent. So I think we should consider moving to the twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred percent vesting schedule. So if we have an employee that's been here, say, maybe three or four years. You know, they have a potential of getting sixty to eighty percent of the town match. And then maybe they wouldn't leave, maybe they would stay and think, oh my gosh, in another year or two, I'll be fully vested. And it would be financially advantageous for them to stay. Right now, we, we tend to lose people maybe at the two to three-year mark, because. There, there is no gain for them to stay, there's no, no financial benefit. So we were hoping to be more in line with what other towns are offering for the defined contribution. And that would be a plan amendment, so since we have had our defined contribution plan since two thousand and fourteen. This might be a good time that if we were going to consider changing the vesting schedule. To look at the defined contribution and just make sure that our language is up to date and current and. Enhance any other things within that document, so that we have a current document to work with.
Yeah, one thing we found is there's just some things that are not quite clear in our plan documents, so I do recommend. No matter what we decide, is that the document itself just needs to be updated and clarified, cause as we've gone through different. People, you know, situations where they're leaving the town under either retiring or whatever, we've had some. Uh, I would just say areas that were gray, you know, that we really need better clarification and, and just some. Mistakes in the document, not bad mistakes, but just, you know, we need to clean it up. Um, and I will say the vesting, I was, you know. Stunned when I came in here that it was like you get nothing, you're here five years and then you don't get any matching whatsoever, so I think that, the, the phasing in. Um, is important, cause it, it, I think if you're a young person starting, you think, well, why even bother? You know, you're not thinking, I'm gonna be here for five years, so I think it's another little carrot to be able to tell our younger employees that. You know, hey, if you start saving for retirement now, you're doubling your money or you're getting twenty percent of whatever you put in, so it's a carrot to have them. Start saving for their retirement. I'll never forget when I was about twenty-five years old. My boss sat me down and just said, you gotta start putting money into this, you're giving money away. Because the, the company is gonna match dollar for dollar, every dollar you put in here, so. Having that conversation and knowing that it's something that they'll reap right away, I think is a good carrot to get more young people to participate. Um, I, I just think it's a, it's the right thing to do to encourage people to retire. I also remind people that we have uh, Deb, do you remember how many, we also have legacy employees on the pension plan? The pension plan, they do not get matching, so this isn't going to go to people who are getting a pension, right? This is just for people, i- if you get a pension, you can participate in the plan, but you do not get any uh matching in the defined. Uh, contribution plan. Um, but I'm trying to remember the employee mix, cause we still have a lot of employees on the uh pension plan, don't we?
We have um. I'm thinking unaffiliated, I think we have twenty-two, maybe twenty-five unaffiliated employees. Maybe less, uh, you know, I'm doing, um, the, the.
I'm putting on the spot.
Work with includes everybody.
Right, so, but when you do the math, it's not gonna apply to those unaffiliated employees, um.
Right.
It's, it's, um, and then, you know. It's also, you know, you look at it from a fairness standpoint, you try to, you look at the collective bargaining groups that have had this for a while. The seven percent, correct? Um, so, um, you know. But there is a cost to that, so um, obviously that's gonna be a budget discussion. So I guess I leave it for discussion.
I had, I heard, I, so I, I heard Deb and Peggy, I heard you saying two different things. Um, Peggy, I heard you say that a current, under the current system, a new employee is not eligible. For matching contributions from the town until they cross the five-year threshold. Deb, I heard you say that they're just not vested in that, and if they were to leave. Whatever the town had contributed, the town would take back.
No, I, they, they still accumulate, they still accumulate, but they, they don't vest it until five years, so what I'm saying is that. You're a young person, you're coming in for your first year. You know, you feel like that money is not my money for five years, so uh, it's a mentality thing, that's all, but they. The matching starts when, when they start, but um, they, they're not vested for five years, which is a long time when you're. You know, twenty-two years old, you're not thinking five years.
I get that, and, and the, and reason, the reason for the vesting period was to encourage longevity, now. I'm not gonna argue that that isn't outmoded now, that that isn't the current paradigm in, in benefits. But that was exactly the reason to, to not make it available and, and Deb, I would argue that the, the three-year example you gave. Um, that person walks away with um eighty percent of what they've, what they've done. Um, that's less encouragement to stay the extra two years than the, you know, getting it all at, at five years.
I don't know, I mean, I think that, yeah, I mean, I think the thinking has changed a lot in this, that we need to encourage young people to save for the retirement. There's not a safety net that's out there much, right? Um, and so the incentives are different now, to your point, right, than when this was originally derived.
You used, Deb, you used the word mandatory and not mandatory in your table on, on retirement, can you explain what, what? Those, what you're speaking to there?
People are not, they do not have to make a defined contribution. Investment, as part of the onboarding, we go through what they are eligible for as an employee. Obviously, it's each employee's choice to make. Any kind of contributions to a pre-tax savings account.
Is there, are there towns that make it mandatory? Is that a practice?
Yes, uh, we do have, for some of our union groups, we do have a mandatory investment, like a three percent. But yes, some towns, especially the ones that have a higher defined contribution, there are some towns here that have. You know, say a ten to fifteen percent defined contribution limit for a match. And yes, they do make the employees participate at least with a three to five percent contribution.
So in the simplest of terms, in a collective bargaining agreement, um. It's a, it's a effectively baked into the agreement is a mandatory retirement savings plan, correct?
Yes, if it's a negotiated item in a collective bargaining agreement. It has to be mandated and yes, it would be written in there. Um, right now, we do have that in a couple of our contracts. But that's a negotiated item and it's to encourage employees to, to save for the future. It's, it's not meant as a detriment at all, it's meant to encourage the employees to save.
Would it ever be worthwhile to consider um. Uh, having two paths an employee can choose, if you, if you elect the mandatory contribution. Will vest you on the twenty, forty, sixty, eighty schedule. Um, and if you elect not to, then, you know, you have, you have to wait the five years until you're vested, will still match. But we're gonna, i- if, if the point is to encourage people to save. Make it as enticing as possible, but also require that they sign on to the, to the philosophy. Right, it's no longer really a retention strategy, which is the way it started out. It's uh, an encouragement to save and have the same net effect as, as a um, a, a kind of a more traditional C B A. Uh, retirement, fine contribution kind of plan.
Well, because we have the four fifty-seven, that allows us to increase the contribution. Whether it be for an unaffiliated employee doing it this way through a, a, a vote or a C B A. If we put in their parameters that make employees do a, they a specific contribution. Then that, we'd lose the option of increasing our employee contribution, that goes away. One of the parameters of the four fifty-seven is that we can increase the amount of contribution in the match. If we change that, which we can, but then it changes our ability to increase that percentage.
Does it change our ability to set what that is? In other words, could you set it at seven percent? And then.
We redo the pension, if we redo that pension document and we put it in that pension document. And we set the limit that way, then it's our pension document. If we wanted to change that percentage and increase it. We would have to redo a pension document.
Okay, but that's not a document that's bound in a contract anyway, right? That's something you would do at your discretion. So, in effect, by simply re, re, um rewriting the pension document, you can change the contribution.
Yes. You wanna go.
Not the nature of a, a policy change, and that's the point, right? We're doing a policy change.
We're doing a policy change for unaffiliated and because we have a pension document that is a four fifty-seven. You as the board can change the percentage. And increase it from six percent to whatever.
And so, yeah, so my point is that to, you know, I, I think Peggy's right, I think younger people have a tough time. Seeing that twenty or thirty-year time horizon that I wish I could claw back. So why not sweeten the pot um as much as possible by saying. Elect into a mandatory contribution. And the um, the, the amortization, the, the vesting. Um, schedule is quicker, um, the town contribution is, is, I guess would be the same at seven percent, whatever's competitive. But. I mean, for lack of a better word, convince them that this is in their own best interest, but then hold them to it.
We tried during the onboarding to give them all of that.
Well, the, the other, the other thing that we could do. Um, I, I hear what you're saying, like you're giving them an additional carrot, like if you, if you uh opt into a certain amount early on. You're gonna get more matching, right? So you're incentivizing them to, to, to save more, right? Which I'm, I, I think we have to go through and figure out how we would implement that and from the existing plan and then how it would impact. Our collective bargaining agreements and um, the other thing that we could do, which some. I, at least I know in the corporate world, you're automatically put into that. Plan, and then you just have to opt out later, right? So um, you know, so there could be where auto enrollment, you know, so yes, they can opt out. But it's much, you know, mentally or, or um, it's a bigger, you know, thing to opt out of, like to pull yourself out of something versus. If you're just automatically enrolled, it's easy, there's a default percentage that automatically happens. Um, that might capture some people earlier, you know. In their, when they come on board, so that's another thought, is the auto enroll.
Well, another good thing is that we have less than ten people. In the entire town, all of our employees, unaffiliated in our union groups. That do not participate in a defined contribution plan, which I, I think is a really good number, so. We constantly try and encourage them to put money aside, but. Less than ten people of the entire town is, that's good, a good participation number.
It's a good participation number, but um, I also look at this more and more, we're doing lateral hires, right? So you have somebody who worked ten years at a town. They're gonna miss, you know, there, then they come over to our town and they gotta wait another five years and they get no. You know, retirement savings, and that, that's hard. We have an aging workforce in the municipalities as well, so I think that five-year. You're vesting, you know, it's just an anachronism to the pension world, right? That's what it used to be about. Um, that's where that came from, so I think we're trying to modernize this understanding, we have a lot more. Uh, um, people are moving around a lot more in the municipal world, which they used to not do, and they're doing a lot more lateral. You know, uh, hires, so we need to make ourselves competitive. I mean, it sounds like there's support, we don't have to make decisions today. Let's think through, you know, um, you know, I'm just trying to think through. We could put this on the agenda again and like get, dig down to actually what we would be voting on and maybe I can just go back. Cause obviously the, this is a bigger issue, the pension or the uh, uh, defined uh, contribution plan. Are we good on the personal days? Adding additional personal day. Um, okay, um, and then are we fine on uh, the uh, vacation day? So that you're now eligible, starting in your, uh, what are we proposing again? Thinking a pension role, just summarize again what we're proposing. Is it, uh, year ten, you go to fif- you go to uh, twenty days, right, versus having to wait till you're fifteen?
Yeah.
Right. Which is very much in the market right now and, and that's once again a recruiting issue, we're getting people, you know, seven, eight years into their. Uh, careers, trying to lateral hire, it makes us more competitive. So everybody seems comfortable with that. Okay, so maybe we can come back at the next meeting with like a proposal to vote on those. And then we can talk more and get some more detail and have some cost numbers too on the whole. Uh, defined contribution thing, cause that'll be a whole, we'll do all that at once. Making changes to the plan, the vesting schedules, try to a- address what Bruce's, you know, we can look at that as a, as a concept too and talk. Uh, how we would structure that, okay?
Okay.
Everybody good with that? Yep. Okay, great, all right, good, well, thank you Deb, we'll, we'll move on and that'll, we'll, we'll address that some more. And this would be, any of the policy changes, I think, would go into effect for the July one, right? So this would be.
July one of next year.
Yeah.
And that's when we would revise the personnel policy and just put an updated date of July one, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, um, moving on to item twelve, um, I don't have, unfortunately, I have this call that I don't wanna be too late for, it's kind of important. But we'll keep this moving, um, real quick, um, uh, if Sam could be uh, brought up. The state of Connecticut came to us recently, they have identified a, um. They have identified a bridge in town that is a railroad bridge that is on a town road. That has some issues with it and it needs to be either um repaired or replaced. And the way it works with um, the state for a town road on a Amtrak, I guess the state handles Amtrak railroad bridges. Um, the town, there's a, a, an agreement going back decades where the town has to pay a certain amount of the cost of that improvement. And Sam, you, I know you're here, was it ten percent of the cost? I can't remember, um, so. Fifteen percent, yeah. So turns out, you know, replacing a bridge is very expensive, um, and so the state came to us. To talk through the three options, that they ultimately will make the decision, all we can do is give our, you know, preferences. Um, so if you wanna share the screen, um, so this is the bridge um, on Fourth Path Road that goes over the Amtrak, the railroad. And um. We, we got a big presentation on why this has to be done, and if you're interested in that, we can talk about that another time or send you that, but. Pretty much this is kind of what the alternatives are. The first alternative, which is the most, or the third alternative, which is highlighted in green, is, is. Um, the first alternative, which is the most, or the third alternative, which is highlighted in green, is is what the state felt might be the best option, and that's just to completely remove the bridge. And you basically have, you cannot cross over the railroad. Uh, you would basically have two cul-de-sacs on each side. Um, and with that, there's a cost associated with that, and then our contribution would be fifteen percent. Um, so that's kind of like the lower cost option and the option that the state was kind of leaning towards. We had a call with our service chiefs. Um, there was a lot of concern about uh public safety response. Um, you know, there's also issues like, you know, we have other bridges where, you know, our trucks can't get through that. And so this was kind of seen as a avenue for them to go through. Um, they would prefer to keep the bridge in place. That was loud and clear. Correct, Sam, from um our service chief's discussion?
Yes.
So, um, and I'm just doing this really quick. But uh, the other two option is one, is alternative one is rebuilding the entire bridge because to bring it up to current standards that Amtrak has set for these things, and that is going to be the most costly. The second is just doing a um replacement of part of the bridge that would, you know, fix structural problems with it. Um, but it wouldn't necessarily bre- bring it up to compliance with the Amtrak standards. Um, and so that's the one that's in between, which ranges, you know, so five hundred and forty thousand dollars for us for them to remove it to almost two million dollars uh if they were to do um the entire thing. Um, so I guess I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about this because obviously, this is something that we're going to have to think about planning for. It's an expense, no matter what we look at this, it's not in our CIP currently, um, and it's going to have a community impact. Um, and, you know, the, we told the state that obviously our preference would be to keep the bridge with the most cost alternative option here, which would be option uh, which would be option, alternative one. Um, we haven't formally put anything in there. I can write a letter and I can advocate strongly. We did tell them that public safety is concerned about this. They did do an updated traffic count, which I think they came out, Sam, at what, eight hundred cars a day? Which is not a big number from what I understand in traffic, right? Um, so. Um, I guess.
Yeah, it does increase the response time one to two minutes, depending on, they did it from the firehouse, the ambulance, and the police station. Um, but what they don't take into account is the responders responding from their homes. So, you know, that's another issue with the response.
How many railroad crossings do we have now?
How many railroad crossings?
Yeah.
Um, Four Path responding. We have at least three. Um, it go over. You have two that are underpasses. Um, one is impassable by the fire trucks. That's only got a ten-foot high clearance, and the other one is ten-five. Um, so we can get some trucks underneath there.
We can get all of our fire vehicles over this bridge though, right?
Well, not right now. They reduced the weight restriction. Oh. They reduced it to sixteen tons uh for a single ax, for a single vehicle, and then twenty-six for tractor trailer. So, so something has to be done with the bridge.
Because it's failing?
Yes.
I would not say it's failing, but there are deficits in it that have been identified that need to be repaired.
It needs a little.
I'm just thinking about the service area because because the, the going under on Mogartown isn't going to be an option for um a lot of vehicles, a lot, and and our, and probably a lot of our fire vehicles. Um, it's, 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 what, what, how do you get to that area from Route One? Um.
You have to go to Wildwood or you got to go on the highway.
And then come back on Fort Path?
Yes.
Get off in Mogartown and come back Fort Path?
Correct.
There is a pretty significant chunk of real estate that gets not cut off, but.
Yes, and that's why we chose alternative one. They did say it's up to the commissioner. The commissioner could choose to do alternative two sees it in their best interest, but so, but we're advocating for alternative.
A- a- and note that this is going to have an impact on the properties around there, no matter what happens because of the design and the improvements that need to be made. Um, even alternative one, doesn't that impact? Is that require easements? I'm trying to remember now.
No, alternative one doesn't have any really impact on the property, nearby properties, because they would just be replacing the bridge deck.
Oh, that's right. It was alternative two or, yeah.
If they did the full bridge replacement, they would, they would have to take further easements because they're going to raise the bridge by at least four feet to make it comply with the Amtrak standards now for, if you were to put a new bridge in.
Um, so, um, you know, I think the question is, do you want to take a deep dive into this, you know, at a, at a later time? And as a board, you know, uh, advocate. Um, I was just struggling with this because there's obviously big dollar amounts associated with this, right? So, but in my view, I looked at five hundred and forty thousand dollars versus eight hundred and ten. The incremental three hundred thousand dollars would be worth it to keep the bridge. It keeps the neighborhood happy. It keeps the first responders happy, right? Um, I'm not as concerned about Amtrak standards, I guess. Um, but, you know, the state is obviously looking at this as like, if we're going to do this, let's do it, something that's going to last, you know. Well, fifty years versus seventy-five, I don't plan to be here. So, um, no. Uh, so I guess, you know, the question is, do you want to take a deep dive into this? You know, to advocate for a specific option, um, or? You know.
I don't, I think option one is probably the best one to, for us to to request.
I agree. I think I I would, I would leave it with yours and Sam's hands to draft something to advocate for it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just don't envision us really, it's really the state with, that would be advocating for option two, right? Because it doesn't really impact us. Um, and you're comfortable then op- for option one versus just option three, which is just getting rid of the whole thing?
It's an option one.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm good with option one, too. I, I think if we were to seriously consider option three, we would need a lot more information and public input.
I agree, yeah. Option one seems the way to go. I mean, just first glance, thinking about it, removing that bridge just seems like the absolute wrong way to go.
Okay. All right, so we will do that. Um, we will, you know, and I'll copy on the letter that we write. I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with that because this will be a conversation for CIP. The timing seems to be in the next three years, but I just, I I didn't want to, um, knowing the state, it may not be, it might be five, seven years, you know, by the time this goes through their processes and stuff. So we'll have time to put it into CIP and deal with it. Um, okay, great. I will do that. Um, last thing, um, I, if i- i- you know, I I don't think we have any citizens comments on here. We're also on a bit of a time crunch. So are we good if we just move on to the executive session, which will only take a few minutes? It'll be very quick. Um, I don't see any hands raised, and I think um, in the interest of time, if the public is watching this, we have a quick executive session on some negotiations that we're handling. So we're going to go to that and then close out the meeting. We'll be, no votes are being taken or anything um by the board. So with that, um, I'd like to make a uh motion to move into executive session and to invite Jeannie Stevens and Sam DeBura into executive session.
The move.
Stacy coming too?
Oh, and Stacy, sorry, I didn't know she was still on. Yeah, and Stace, invite Stacy as well. amended motion to include all those three to the meeting. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. All right, thank you. We'll just give it a second.
Recording stopped.
And just adjourn the meeting once we're out.
You're good.
Hmm, see everybody.
Okay, we're, Jeannie, why is this still recording the whole time? It should not be on there.
No, it wasn't recording. I just turned it back on when you came out.
Oh, okay, all right. Phew. Okay, great. All right, so. Still locked. There we go. Okay. All right, so we are now out of executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.